Welcome you all to our workshop. I'll let you know, if you can see inside in the back, there will be no open floor items tonight at the workshop. This is a workshop where we discuss our agenda for the coming Tuesday. We go over details to make sure that the council members all have enough information ahead of time so they're prepared to vote on Tuesday. You get a chance to ask questions. Follow-up opportunities for staff to provide information before our Tuesday meeting. So, obviously, a public meeting, you're welcome to listen in, but it is not a time for public discussion tonight. Again, council members are available privately or after the meeting or at, you know, at the convenience of email or phone call for further discussion. But tonight will be a workshop and not, there will be no voting tonight. So, everybody knows that going into it. So, the first item on our workshop agenda is from planning and zoning and Radamacher, Raisler, plan amendment request. And as with the planning and zoning, we had a land use plan amendment and rezoning request by Daniel and Jamie Stover as well. Certainly, those that were at the meeting are well versed in, and I assume that those that weren't in the meeting had an opportunity to listen or observe through YouTube here. Questions or discussions regarding those? We have additional information from our planner that was put in our packet. Council had questions at this time. Nothing?
More questions.
Anything, Paul?
I was just looking for something to add.
I thought I had read in here, and Liz's notes incorrect me if I'm wrong, but there was a potential of getting a new revised plan. Is, are we, have you seen anything on that or any thoughts on that?
Um, no, I did want to say a couple words on what your options are for extended review. I know there was interest in extending the 60-day period out, you know, even to an unlimited date where you could consider current request in association with our comp plan updates, which does make a lot of sense. And there has been some talk about revising the plan. If we did go that route, it's recommended that we hold another public hearing to consider that revised plan. But it's definitely an option and it may be a positive option in that, at that. I don't know if the council's interested. I know Mr. Raisler would like to say a few words if you have any interest in hearing what he's got to say.
Council? Fine with me.
I'd like to speak then, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Yeah, after the announcement that there'll be no open floor items, I think that would be inappropriate.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's never bet here.
I think if he has new evidence or new testimony or stuff that has not been presented to us before, then that's allowable. But if it's the same thing, same concept plan, the same thing that was presented in the past, then I would say no. But if there's no information that we have not received yet, then I'd say yes. We should allow it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Bettinger, then, are you then going to open it up for the residents that are here to have input into new information?
I think if there's no information that allows us to move forward or to send it back to PNC, I'm speaking in that tone, so that at that point, if we approved or send it back to PNC, they would be able to voice their opinion at that point.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
I guess I would concur to some degree with Councilmember Bettinger in that in the memo, I do discuss a possible revised concept. And in attempts to get more information just regarding that, it's not inappropriate to hear the applicant. You know, it doesn't mean we're having a whole public hearing, but you have to understand what your options are for Tuesday. So, I guess whatever the majority feels.
Councilmember Rickert. We heard, Councilmember Bryan?
Yeah, if, again, I agree, if there's new information that we are not aware of, I don't have an issue hearing that.
And regarding, then, the other people that are in attendance, if they have a response to the new information?
You know, yeah, it's kind of catch- funny to, you know, I, again, based on looking at the planning and zoning video and whatnot, I don't mind listening to, you know, one or two, but I, obviously, we've got to limit the amount of how much that is. I know this is obviously a, for a lot, it's an emotional thing, so it's, you know, if we can do that constructively and on a limited basis, I don't have an issue with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, again, I am opposed to it. We originally opened the meeting, said there's no open floor. And this memo is dated July 28th. We're now almost a week later from that. And if there was new information, I feel it should have been presented and had, we should have had that in front of us prior to tonight's meeting. So, again, I am not in favor of new information. If Mr. Raisler wants to bring something forward next Tuesday during the floor items, that would be more appropriate.
I think we have consensus on the council that if there's no information, it would be worthwhile hearing. I would think that it's better to have here on public record with people in attendance to at least hear it, rather than have everybody surprised on Tuesday that something else has happened and that might change the vote. It also gives the residents an opportunity to respond to that. I'm not going to let everybody speak as we did on Tuesday night, but I will entertain the limited discussion on it if we let Mr. Raisler speak, so. So, if there is additional information, I think it's best that the residents hear it, the residents that are able to watch it on YouTube, and then can prepare their response as well for the council. And I would encourage those residents to make their voices known to the council members who will be voting on it on Tuesday. So, with that said, I will let Mr. Raisler speak briefly.
Great, thank you. Actually, I do have pertinent information and it'll change the whole, this whole conversation. After the PNC meeting with all the residents and opposition and so forth to it, we think it'd be prudent to probably withdraw the majority of our application at this time, just so we can address it in the comp plan. We'll take a look at the whole overall area. There are a lot of concerns and so forth that the people do have that I think probably needs a little bit of time to flush that stuff out. And so, rather than pushing it forward, trying to get an approval, I think we'll just withdraw at this time. And so, I have an application to withdraw the majority of my parcel, and I also have an application to withdraw for the Stover parcel. So, we'll just simply withdraw it. We'll address it in the comp plan and then we'll march forward. Now, we're not withdrawing the 10 acres on the corner that was originally applied for. That was applied for, and then I added at a later date some additional land to the north, and then Stover added their additional land into the same basic application. We would like to proceed with the 10-acre corner, and the big reason of that, and that was your original application, so we're not changing anything. That was your original application that you received from Brandon Rodemacher and myself on May 8th. And we'd like to proceed to the next Tuesday night's council meeting to get your vote on that. Most of the issues have been flushed out on the entire parcel and on the corner, and you heard a lot of the testimony from the PNC people about a new convenience store and a liquor store coming in on that corner. The parcel would be 10 acres in size, just like this original application, and it would have actually two parcels. There'd be one for five acres for a liquor store and one for five acres for the convenience store. Here's our, why we would like to march forward with this before the comp plan. Number one, I'd like to keep Mr. Rodemacher in this community and not allow him to go outside of our community. And so, I'd like to march forward with that, right, not that request, because somebody's going to build along those collectors. It's too heavily, it's too heavily of traffic that's going along there. And I was approached on 181st and Cleveland is where I was approached in the city of Elk River. And they wanted to buy my corner on 181st and Cleveland for a convenience store. I was approached by QuickTrip, and I was also approached by Bill Suborette. And so, they wanted to build in Elk River. I say we don't allow them to build in Elk River. They actually give them an opportunity and we keep it in the city of Nalthen. If they don't build in Nalthen on that corner, they will simply go to the city of Ramsey and try to get it in the city of Ramsey. Excuse me, I have the floor now. I was given the floor. They're simply going to go to the city.
With the understanding that it was new information.
Hey, this is his meeting, not yours, and I have the floor. And so, they are simply going to go there. So, there's an economical reason, and I would like to flush that out at the council meeting when my item's on the agenda, and I will explain that. But I wanted to give you a brief reason why I'd like to march forward with it, just so that you thoroughly understand it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
My reason for asking for the floor is we opened this up for new information. The new information ended at the point where you were taking out the Stovers and the other commercial part and leaving the 10 acres in there. The remainder of that was not new information.
I disagree.
Well, it, I've heard it all before, so it's not new.
And I will say, I think it's important, and I let it go on, because I think it's important for Mr. Raisler to express exactly why he wants to move forward, so the residents can hear, because I think they're, they have a vested interest in whether it's now a reduced parcel, but it's still 10 acres in gas and liquor, and the choice here versus Ramsey or Elk River or somewhere else. So, I think that was important for the residents to hear as well.
Mr. Mayor.
So, Councilmember Rainville.
I disagree. Those were all comments that had been made in other public meetings, so.
All right, so.
Which public meeting? It's not school. You don't have to raise your hand.
Actually, in this meeting, you do, if you want to talk, so. So, at this point, does the council have anything else that they would like to, since I gave Mr. Raisler a chance to speak? Anything else they want to hear at this point? Or with it, with what you heard at the public hearing and what you have in front of you and what you heard tonight, are you okay with that part of it?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So, Planner Stockman, regardless of whether this was the original 10-acre plan or the greater commercial area, this still would have to go to met the council, is that correct?
Yes, same process.
It's still, it's still a comp plan amendment request, which is what originally was. Okay, Conley.
Clayton, Conley, 9030 184th Avenue Northwest. Couple of things from the planner, at least I heard that your memo, and I think you're referring to the one dated July 28th, was indicating that the council could accept comments from Mr. Raisler as well as Mr. Rodamacher and by the Stovers as well. I'm not seeing that in the language here. I'm seeing that the city council can discuss it, they can talk about it. It's not an invite for their conversations. That was at the public hearing. So, I just kind of want to make that clarification, because we've kind of opened up Pandora's box, and the few residents that you see here, we're lucky to even know it because they're on my block and because I've had some experience with this working and being involved in government with the city of Brooklyn Park. So, the crowd, if you had opened this up, I can guarantee you, as you'll see on Tuesday, you would have much more people here in attendance that are trying, and it's fine. You withdraw the two offers or what have you, and now we're changing the game and doing just the original, is my understanding now. Well, the neighborhood still doesn't want it, for all the same reasons that the planner has indicated, that she's answered all the questions that were brought up on the two previous dates, they haven't been answered. And they haven't satisfied the public. I appreciate some of the council members at least giving us this opportunity to, again, state our opposition, which was very obvious with even the planning and zoning recommendation to deny it. And that's what you have in front of you. So, that's all I have for now.
So, again, to make it clear, Mr. Raisler on his behalf and on Mr. Stover's, Mr. Stover's behalf, both Mr. Stovers have withdrawn their request for comp plan amendment on the larger parcel and communicated that there still is a request before the council. So, those two will go away, but there's still a request for the council on two five-acre parcels for a gas station and liquor store on that corner. And so, that will be before the council on Tuesday for a vote.
So, what happens, my follow-up question to that, so what happens, and we can educate the residents, what happens to that applicant's money that it appears that with those original applications in the ballpark of $1,500 per application? Where does that money go? Is that money returned now? Because in dealing with the planner and several amendments, and I printed off the 53 pages in the packet, I mean, it's a tell of, hey, if you don't get this and it's not approved and it all looks like it's not going to get approved, you better withdraw or otherwise you're going to lose out and you can't reapply for a minimum of one year. So, where does that money go? Is my basic question, they had a $1,500 or thereabouts application fee that they said they had to pay. Is that now returned to the Stovers and to Rodamacher and Raisler or because they withdrew? Or?
I'll answer your question, Planner Stockman.
Thank you. No, sir, they're responsible for all the consultant costs and city cost to date. So, they will still get a bill up through today or up through this very last memo, at least for me. And then there's, you know, the basic fees that come out of that as well.
And the fees, the fees that are submitted cover the public hearing, covers city costs. So, those costs that were incurred are not going to return. There's an escrow put in there for any money that isn't expended would be returned above and beyond cost for the planner, for the city. So, there is a minimum fee whenever we have to publish and announce, do mailings and things like that. So, there is a cost that goes with that, that we do collect. Accurate?
Yeah, so we're all on a pass-through fee system right now.
All right, at this point, we will ask the council to have any other questions amongst ourselves at this point. Something to deliberate, I'm sure you'll be hearing from people between now and then. For those that are watching on YouTube, those in the audience here, the, again, it's a different meeting from the planning and zoning, which was specifically a public hearing. We reiterated at the public hearing, that's the time to get up and speak extensively. At the city council meeting, that is a business meeting of the city council. We do a lot for floor items. So, we, at the beginning of the meeting, after the sheriff's report, we do have a sign-up sheet. We ask people to sign up, tell us what you're going to be talking about, and there will be a limited time. If the room is packed like it was previously, we'll shorten the time. If it's just a few people that want to speak, our standard public forum is three minutes. People get three minutes to speak. The council is not obligated, if you bring up something at a public forum, the council's not obligated to take action that night. But it is a way for the residents to be on record of what they think about, whatever. And in this case, I would imagine it'll be this, this plan. So, so again, it will not, when the council, after the floor items on Tuesday night, when the council discusses, we will not take any more input from the audience at that point. So, so everybody knows the rules going in. I don't want any surprises on Tuesday. The public forum is for vigorous debate and interaction. The council meeting is a business meeting at that point. One last thing.
That does remind me of one point that I wanted to make that I kind of touched on with the planner, where she said she answered all the questions. And she actually had Mr. Rodamacher bring in a police report, basically a list of how many calls per service. And when I came to the meeting and brought up the point of my experience and one of the sheriff's input, where he didn't provide it and he left, my basic question and what I want for the council to understand is if you put a gas station and butt it up to residential property, from my experience in the 20 years that I worked as a police officer in the city of Brooklyn Park, you're going to have numerous calls, numerous problems, crime, and it's not where you want it, especially in the southwest.
I appreciate that. At this point, it's not new information. I will say that I don't know that the planner had Mr. Radamacher bring that information. I do believe he pursued that on his own. I don't know that for sure. I do know that per the question that came up at the, the previous hearing, the sheriff actually did do, collect data on similar combinations, in fact, by the same owner of gas station and liquor store in a generally residential area. And they were not there to present any of that information, but I don't know, unless you talk to Mr. Rodamacher, that he didn't get that information himself from the sheriffs.
I'd like to clarify, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you may.
I did request that information, the public information from the sheriff's office, who provided it to me, and I did share that with the two applicants involved.
And, and I don't know that the details that Mr. Radamacher shared, I don't know if that was information you had as far as the breakdown of calls.
No, he interpolated that, yeah, himself, yeah.
So, the sheriff didn't give that information, he didn't break down what the calls were, just how many?
Correct.
Okay. All right, anything else that the council needs on that before Tuesday night? Seeing and hearing nothing at this point? I'm going to presume that since the Stover land request was withdrawn, that we can go on to item C, the encroachment agreement. And did we have anything from A and B?
Have a good night.
Did we have anything from A and B Walding on the encroachment?
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
I have not heard from the all wellings since I did this final document. I spoke with Rob Machetta, who was designated to work with me on this issue. Spoke with him as late as last, oh, no. Well, the day I put this together, so, the 31st. And he was agreeable and thought the all wellings would be agreeable to everything there. We, you know, changed the map and we have the correct reference to the diagram. So, as long as we condition it upon them combining those lots, then we're fine with the setback arrangement.
Previous meeting, you had said that there was some resistance to combining the lots.
Initially, there had been, but after I chatted with Mr. Machetta about it and explained that, you know, if the all wellings were ever going to put a building addition on, which they had talked about too, that they would need to do the same thing. And then we talked about it as somewhat of a trade-off for, you know, them cooperating in that regard, and then being that the city had.
Excuse me, if there's going to be side discussions, Mr. Conley?
Yep.
If they'll have to take us outside, there's going to be side discussions. Speakers do pick it all up, so.
Being that the city had approved a fence in previous years when the first outdoor storage went in, I think it's reasonable to assume that we would allow that as a continuation of that type of fence, and especially given the fact that it's still permitted it as part of our ordinance, that was material, so.
Is that on all sides, north and west as well?
It is, that's the only type of fence they have, yeah.
No, what I'm saying that, because I noticed in like the concrete business, there's nothing to the north. They've got some, something, I don't know, they've finished their fencing there, but it seems like.
Oh, he just put his along the street, right. Are you referring to the setback required on all sides?
No, I'm talking about the screened fencing.
Oh.
Some, some other business is going to go north of A and B.
Oh, right.
Are they required on their north border, the fence that they will put up, to also be screened, or is that?
No, you don't have to screen adjacent to another industrial use.
Okay, but, but as far as Farriton?
The screening comes on the right-of-way side, right. So, in this situation, it's a little difficult when we have the easement along Nalthen Boulevard. And if Farrit turns out to be their side yard and they're meeting that or matching their current location of their fence, then there's really not a lot of room left on that side. Plus, I think, I mean, an interior street may or may not be a little less significant, but just the fact that it becomes side yard and they, because they do own so many lots, we have to respect that as well. You know, you have the right to request landscaping or something.
I'm talking about the, the screening within the fence, the slats, the whatever fence material they put up.
Okay.
That they would put up along Nalthen Boulevard, does that apply to, to Farrit as well? And the fence itself, the slats in the fence between properties? So, you're saying there's nothing between properties from industrial to industrial?
Right, I would encourage.
I'm not talking about landscaping, because we already talked, there's not enough room if we're going to give them those setbacks.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, I would encourage the slats on the street sides, the right-of-way sides, but if they don't want to put them on the north side, then they wouldn't be required to per the ordinance.
And when somebody eventually builds on that north lot, north of them, on 201st and Nalthen, they would have to put up some type of screaming, screening if they were going to have a yard of some sort.
Right, but there again, they would only be required to do it on Farrit and 201st.
If they did it on 201st, it would block the view all the way down south of them.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Yeah, there's no guarantee, though, that that property or whoever buys that property is going to put in a yard, so they may or may not need screen at all.
Yep. Yeah, just from 201st, you would, you'd be looking down multiple storage yards. And it may be, I don't know what the cost of the slot material is, but it may be all wellings want to screen their materials, so.
Yeah, maybe they do.
All right, anything else on that? Seeing and hearing none, move on to D. Planner Stockman, do you want to bring us up to speed on the?
Sure.
-Hagelberg?
So, Mr. Hagelberg is currently in the process of obtaining an IUP for his outdoor storage. And with the Complan Amendment that was on the July planning and zoning agenda, we didn't get to some of the other items. And that has delayed Mr. Hagelberg another month. So, his request is to begin putting the fence up for security reasons prior to, I mean, that was always his plan, to get the fence up first before he started building, and get that accomplished before or in anticipation of the IUP approval. Certainly, he has, is proposing a high-quality fence, and he has approved the structural part of it. It's an eight-foot solid fence. Currently, it is abutting the 40-foot easement along Iguana, and then it's 10 feet from the property line along 201st. So, you know, the fence in and of itself doesn't require any special approvals. The fact that it's associated with the outdoor storage, just want to be sure we're covering our bases in terms of the screening that the city would like to see. The only real comment I had was that we could possibly move that fence back another five feet or so from 201st property line to leave a little more room for planting of vegetation, if the city thought that's what they wanted. We did have the one property owner come in that lived across 201st. Now, if you drive out there, you'll see that there's a cornfield between, you know, her house and the industrial park. So, in reality, I don't know that she could, at this time of year at least, really see that. And the industrial park was there before she moved in. But nonetheless, her screening is required along 201st, and-
The property owner came in, is that the people that lived across Cornfield, or-
Yes.
The horse?
She, mm, well, she is a horse family. She's straight, so she's right on the corner of, is it Tiger?
Engen?
No, Engen, and, yeah, 201st.
There's not a cornfield there.
Where there's a house back. Her house is setback.
Their property, they've got the riding area and pasture area between them and 201st, so there's no, there's corn to the east of them.
Mueller's?
Yeah.
Okay.
But their property is clear all the way down to 201st.
She's open. Oh, okay. Well, so I guess the question is, yeah, we've got an eight-foot fence. The tiny homes are approximately 13 feet or thereabouts. You know, so it's your call. I mean, what, how you want to handle it. Do we just leave room for the landscaping and we allow the planning and zoning to figure out what type of landscaping goes in? Or what, obviously, a bigger tree, like a spruce that may grow higher than the fence, is going to need more room, you know, than something else. So, maybe just open it up for discussion or thoughts on the matter.
The first thing I see is understanding that a number of people that had building desires to build were hoping to be in in the July meeting, and it got so late that they didn't, and they were continued to August. And in effect, it pushed people back about 45 days from their building. So, I think that whatever we can do to accommodate within our guidelines, within the ordinance, within our policy, and we do accommodate, we should do. And so, for Mr. Hagelberg to have a request, there is a risk, you know, I assume you own the property at this point?
We do own the property, yes.
So, there is a risk that the IUP would be somewhat more restrictive, but as he wants to get going and has a lot of money tied up into building materials that need to be stored there, I think the security of a fence and the other cameras and things that he was hoping to do seem to make sense. There's a risk that the IUP could have an impact, but the fact that the building inspector has approved the plans, the original request for a 10-foot fence wasn't possible, an 8-foot fence has been deemed appropriate and possible. The idea, I think, originally was to have some landscaping on the north, some trees. Got to be a problem with the wetlands.
I actually ordered the landscape plan two days ago, so.
Have you seen that, Liz?
Uh, I don't even know if I looked at it, I'm sorry.
Bless you.
Thank you. So, well, also-
Where does that landscape plan put the fence? Is it the extra five feet that Liz was just talking about?
No, so I left, after we discussed it, we, I left it at 10 feet. If they want to move it in five feet, it's fine. The reason it's at 10 feet is the fence is eight feet, it's on center at eight feet all the way, all four sides. So, it's about 1,200 feet of fence, and that way, it's in the front of the 40-foot, because of the easement, 15 on the south side, 10 on the north side, and 80 feet on the west side. So, we have a row of arboretum that will go in on the west side between the fence to the back property, so people can't cut through there on snowmobiles and ATVs. And then, the inside of the property, because I can't really put any trees outside where I'd like to on that 40-foot, because it's easement, we're putting in three different types of evergreens inside the fenced area, and then there'll be another 10 maple trees, because of the fastest growing, in the front corner and then in the back corner. The, we have some shrubbery, and then we talked alongside that fence, if we wanted to in the spring, we could add dogwoods, and we could use either red or yellow. And the only reason I like to wait till the spring, because it's a place that I would purchase them in Iowa, doesn't bear roots, and they only do it in March or April. But those can grow anywhere from four to 15 feet, depending on what you purchase. So, we cover a fence if that's a concern. But it's, when you think of a fence, ours, pickets are actually deck boards. So, it's a six-by-six pole post with two-by-fours, four of them between each of the eight-foot sections, and then 18 pickets. So, it's a solid fence all the way around, we're not leaving a gap anywhere, and the boards are inch and a quarter, inch thick. So, it's not a fence that you're going to go down and see, and then it's eight foot also. And we couldn't go to 10 because of our tune in that area is too high. And the posts, at that point, became over almost nine-by-nines, and it was, the price for that was just kind of that's around.
All right, council. So, again, the request is to allow the fence to go up first, with planning and zoning still has a continued hearing on this public hearing, and would have to establish all the conditions of the IUP. The risk to the owner is anything that would affect the fencing. But I think with the building inspector's approval of the fencing, the conditions of the IUP within the fencing are the only open issue at this point, and that's still subject to public hearing. So, the question is, would the council have any grave concern at this time regarding the allowance of fencing before the formal IUP is recommended?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Rainville.
I just would like to clarify with Ms. Stockman. The fact, I mean, even if he didn't have an IUP in front of the council, he could put up a fence.
Correct.
So, it's not like we're doing anything special, but, you know, he understands the issue of the IUP, but it is something that he could come in and recommend, request at any time, so.
Yes. Just to comment, the fence in and of itself, especially given its high-quality construction, can be the screening. There really is no landscaping required under the terms of the ordinance unless, yeah, planning and zoning specifies.
I think the owner's original thought was to have some landscaping, and the drainage on the north prevented that. I think it's probably more good neighbor than one more thing, Ms. Hagelberg.
Just one thing, the reason that I was told it had to come to council is most fences are six-foot, and this would be your first eight-foot fence, and it was required to be engineered. And, so that was the only thing.
No, that was, I'm sorry, go ahead, didn't mean to interrupt.
But, and then ironically, this morning, I was on site with a contractor getting a bid, and it was actually a stolen car left on property that I had to call the police to have removed. So, it does concern me that I'm going to have tens of thousands of dollars of building materials laying on the ground, and-
Let's not tell everybody how much it's going to cost. I think some scrap lumber there, a little of no value, but you don't want to lose it.
No, that all we live and all we can, believe me.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, the eight-foot fence requires a building permit, not city council approval. So, that's just kind of an overlap.
But we would be providing support to the council to allow them to go ahead prior to the IUP.
Correct.
Otherwise, Councillor Rainville says they're not technically dependent.
Correct.
All right, council, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Bettinger.
So, he really doesn't need permission to put the fence up from the council?
He doesn't. The concern was just coordinating, yeah, the, you know, normally, I would have said, no, this is associated with the screening, which goes with the outdoor storage, because otherwise the screening wouldn't even be required.
A point for a fence if they're not storing things there.
Yeah. But, yeah, realistically, yeah, he could put the fence up if he didn't have outdoor storage, so.
But from the council's standpoint, he will be storing something there while he's waiting for IUP and building to take place, so he will be providing outdoor storage on a temporary basis. So, I think it's appropriate for the council to weigh in and say, I think it's an okay idea, or wait until you get your IUP and all the Ts are dotted and, or crossed and Is are dotted.
So, really what we're approving is temporary storage until he gets his IUP.
Yep, with a fence around it. Any other questions or concerns? All right, no grave concerns, we'll vote on Tuesday. Same place, same time. Councillor Stockman, anything you want to bring to our attention? A lot of yellow here.
Lot of action, got a lot of things updated, eliminated three additional sites from our list. The only thing I think I'd like to bring to your attention, I did leave the Scott Halderson property, 1-8560 Clary Road, on the list, even though, when I inspected last week, his burn pile was legal and did include brush and some pallets. I did not see any unlicensed or inoperable vehicles that day. There were semi, several semi trucks, but we've been aware of that previously, so I just want to, I guess, keep it on there so I can check a couple more times in the next month, and then see if there's any other thoughts on the matter. You know, some of you are in the vicinity more than I am, so.
So, is he put back on because of a new complaint, or because, I thought we had asked him to be removed because he was in compliance?
Well, we did bring it up, what, two months ago, and then we did get a new complaint. And the, I think the, you know, typically has had the burn pile going. We don't want it to include junk. It did not include any junk when I last looked at it. If it's legal, you know, brush and whatnot, that he's getting off his property and, you know, he gets approval before he starts the fire, that's fine. So, like I said, I didn't see any really glaring violations last week.
How big is the pile?
Well, it's big. I mean, it's at least 20 by 20, maybe, you know, I would say it's-
And what is our legal burn with a permit?
I think, do you go 15 by 15?
So, I guess one of the questions that's come up before is, the understanding is they typically burn in October.
Right.
So, they kind of build up all year. But if you're saying we're already beyond the size limit of a permit, and he's still got three months to pile?
Well, he gets special approval, though, to do that. I mean, the inspector comes out and looks at his pile, and he's done it in the past. So, you know, I guess it's sort of a catch-22 situation, and I'm not-
The question is, would we want multiple residents to have-
Do the same thing.
-20 by 20 or bigger, if he's adding pallets and things for the next-
Right.
-few months? Yeah, at what point do you say the reason it's 15 by 15 is much more controllable, I would think, from a fire standpoint? You want to make sure it's not a windy day for-
Maybe.
...the size of a small garage.
Mr. Mayor, you're speculating, too. You're assuming right now that what he's got in that pile, he's going to light all up in one, and we don't know that. He could have everything piled up in one and then, you know, make smaller piles that, when he burns.
I'm speculating based on history.
Well, I understand that, but again, I'm just saying.
Typically, it's a bonfire in the fall, so.
But if he, and again, if he is going through the proper steps to, you know, get the approvals to do that, you know, to me, I don't understand why he's on here, to tell you the truth. It just seems, you know, there's certain individuals that, not naming names, that have issues, and I see other ones on here that have had zero action whatsoever, but yet, we never talk about those. But this poor guy, every chance we get, he was just in the other month, you know, trying to let us know what he's doing, you know, keep us informed, trying to work with us, but yet he keeps showing up on here, and there's other ones that have been on here for months that we never hear anything or talk about.
Oh, I think that by his own estimate, by his own statement when he was in here, he did agree there were things that can't be burned in there, that his son was pulling out to build forts and stuff with. If those were left in there, yes, the inspector, I don't think would allow it to be burned.
And, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but before he gets his permit, somebody goes out and looks at the pile?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so then, again, that's not our job to do, and that therefore should not put him on here. If he has to go through a certain process, when he gets his permit, he should be able to do that. And if he's doing that, then why are we talking about it?
Well, again, we're complaint-driven at this point.
And my point, why does he keep coming up on here for, in my opinion, things that aren't really a complaint? This isn't a complaint to me. If he's got a pile there that's ready to burn, if he's following all the right steps to do what he's got to do, why is there a complaint? Why are there other complaints on here that we haven't talked about in months that we, that, again, are, in my opinion, way above and beyond this? In my opinion, we're singling out one person, and I don't think that's right.
Again, I was asking the planner what was important on her, to summarize what we've seen, and we've seen a lot of yellow, what's the important one, so.
And again, who brought it to her, and why is it even on the list?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Rainville.
Paul, I will admit, I did file that complaint because I had numerous residents contacting me. And as an elected official, it's my job to bring that forward. So, I mean, I'm not going to tell people, I'm not going to, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Stockman.
Question for Councilmember Rickerd. I know that the state statute allows a 20-by-20 pile, and I agree, I mean, if Mr. Halderson were to split that pile up, you know, it could certainly be legal. I haven't measured the pile. I mean, it looks gigantic to me from the road, but nonetheless, the contents were legal.
the contents were legal.
He's always handled it in the past, so why, I feel we're harassing him. He went out there, and he wasn't violating anything, but yet we want to keep him on the list and keep checking on him. Leave the guy alone. We moved out here to be left alone, and as long as we're allowed by the citizens, leave us alone.
He did clean it up, which is what we wanted. He did take the unlawful items out of the pile, so, I mean, to me, that was the biggest thing.
All right, any other thing on your list that you want to bring to our attention?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Ms. Stockman, looking at one that I believe has been resolved, which is the 19677 Jasper, the third one down, has that not been resolved, and some go down?
Yeah, I almost took that off of there, but I wanted to double-check the... We had him back when we revised that list of IUP conditions. And I did just want to kind of go through those with him before I took him off. Yeah, I do think he's, I know that, you know, the Quonset was removed, and some of the bigger things, yeah.
And I have one other question. On 19933 West Fordbrook, given the, given most of what's there, has there been any contact with the sheriff's office to have them go by and...
Yeah, I know the complainant has called the sheriff, so they're aware of this, yeah, they're aware of it.
Because most of that is law enforcement?
Correct.
Anybody else? Seeing here nothing, where we going? Haven't had a chance to look through the audited claims, anything from the workshop, the meeting minutes? Have you had a chance to look through them all? I haven't looked through the audited claims yet. Proclamation, RCA. Councilmember Bettinger, you want to say anything about the budget on the Upper Rome River?
Uh, no, we did the best we did to keep it as low as we can, so... Let Bowser under way, it'd probably be two, three times what we got, so... But our plan has not been approved yet, so keep that in mind.
We have the recycle and center addition.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I know we've had discussions before on this. I've had conversations with Sue Doll at the county in regards to the grant that we were awarded, and the ability that we would have to use those funds in a method other than doing an addition to the building. And she stated that as long as the purpose of the expenditures are used to work towards increasing our productivity and the type of material we take, that she didn't see any difficulties in doing, making that change to how we would use the grant funds. She did say that there were other cities that have done that, and that's been approved. The only real stipulation is that we do spend by the end of the year. But she didn't see any problem with using those funds to better the building. So going forward, any changes would be, we'd have a better handle on if we did some addition to the building at a later time. I'd submitted the list of things that I came up with, and Councilmember Bryan had sent me, and Don Warden had sent me, the things that we could use that funding for to help us better utilize that facility. And so I would look for council's approval instead of going out and contracting with the company to do the addition that we look at making some other changes to the facility first. Also, one of the things that Sue told me is we can use the funds to hire employees to work in the building, which would help us also with illegal dumps, people taking things from the recycle center, and just keeping it cleaner.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
So when you talk to Sue Doll, you're talking about the full eighty thousand? Or you're talking about just the thirty thousand that we get every year?
No, the dollar amount of the grant, the fifty.
Now, the thirty thousand's a grant, too, that we could lose. That we have to spend on recycling, and that's what we spent last year. We were trying to spend, and we didn't get it all spent. The fifty thousand, I think, is for the building only, and you can't use it for employees and other things. It's for that specific thing.
That isn't what I heard from Sue, because I talked to her about the fifty thousand dollar grant that we were awarded for the addition to the building.
I think better check, because I think they're both grants. And one, you can, and I bet you the fifty thousand, you can't. So we, and if that's the case, we're gonna lose, by not building that addition, we're gonna lose over fifty thousand dollars that could be used toward the city, the recycling center. And the recycling center isn't big enough, we're using another shop down here. It's not efficient, they're hauling materials down here all the time, batteries, cans, light bulbs. We have stuff sitting outside the other end of the building between the recycling center and the fire department. We need an addition to make that place stay cleaner, more efficient. And also, the goal was to add on more materials to be brought in to become a full-service recycling center.
Councilmember Bettinger, we are a full-service facility at this time. We would just be adding to the products that we accept, but we are a full service. The county considers us a full service. I can go back to Sue and ask her again, but I, you know, I specifically talked to her about the grant that was for the construction of the building.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
Obviously, we have two across council actions, one submitted by Cory and one by Mary. I agree with Councilwoman Bettinger, if you look at your list, there's no way we're gonna even come close to... Basically, you're putting signage up, which we have signage up all over, which nobody really pays attention to anyways. I agree, we got, we have an opportunity, we have fifty thousand dollars sitting in front of us by the county. We budgeted the other, most of the other funds to do the addition. I think we're foolish not to accept that and do the addition. I agree that we do need to work out some details as far as how we store stuff, who's gonna run it, things like that. But again, those are things that, once we get a structure and get things set up how we want to, that's things we deal with then. You know, we've gotten additional grants, and I agree, I think they're two separate grants, but, you know, if that other grant does allow us to hire staff, then so be it. Or we hire a seasonal person to do it, you know? But again, I think if there's coordination between the correctional people who come and work there during the day, and there's somebody to kind of watch them, a lot more would get done. I see them over there all the time, doing virtually nothing. If we had somebody who was available to be there, some hours that they're there, again, I think a lot would get more, would be able to get done. And right now, if you go in there, it is cramped and crowded, and we don't have a lot of space. But again, we have the funds, we budgeted for funds, we got a grant from the county. I think we're foolish if we don't use it that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would say there's certainly room, I would say at this time, we can't necessarily look to expand on what we're currently doing until we get what's, we're currently recycling under control. And yes, we've had issues with, because we've got the, we're storing the materials in several different places. There's, and it's not convenient to get the roll-offs out of there because of the way that they're oriented. And yes, we could do, we could do sorting, more sorting, by sorting milk jugs and that kind of thing. But I think part of it, too, is we need to look at a way to organize the space we do have, and if that includes expanding to, because I don't think, you know, otherwise, to rearrange the openings, we're gonna, you know, that's gonna involve, you know, re-architecting the whole thing just by doing part of it. So it certainly would be worth looking into to at least take what we can, take what we have, reorganize it if needed, consolidate things together to make it more efficient, and then move forward. Because as I understood it, we didn't have to take, you know, we didn't have to expand any, expand into taking more things just because we've, just because we've added on to the recycling center.
Councilmember, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Bryan, as the grant was originally written, we were going to increase the items, we were going to take, the type of items with the addition that would allow us to do that. But I agree with you, we can't handle what we have now. We don't know, we don't know ours, we don't know who's doing what, we don't know anything. And I think that we need to get a handle on that first.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
So two things. We did state that we were going to accept additional items. There's no timeline on when we have to do that, number one. Number two, by putting an addition on that we have the funds, a huge portion of those funds are coming from a grant from the county. How is that hurting us in any way from getting organized on how we can do things now? Seems to me it'd be beneficial, because we have more space to do what we want to do in it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
There was a compliment, Paul. There's no way to get organized, we can't fit, there's a roll-off down in this building. We can't fit another roll-off there. There's no way you're gonna get that organized and get everything to fit in there. And you can't be mixing the materials together. They each have their own container, each roll-off. And if you want to clean it up and make it look nicer, you put that addition on. That's why we, that's why we started that conversation a few years ago for that addition, was to get organized, get it cleaned up, get it so it's functional, get it so, we're probably violating our own organs. We all have stuff stored outside, it's not even screened. So get that stuff so it's screened, it's behind the fence or it's inside the building. We're talking about someday allowing an addition to be put in the fire department. There really isn't room with this stuff being stored out there. We got a grant that's gonna pave the addition that will allow us to get more organized, and we're still have the grant that we can put more staff hours toward cleaning up. The maintenance guys are doing it now, I've been over there, and it looks way better. They've been doing a really good job, so I think there's a little bit of misinformation going on here. I mean, for a while there, for some reason, I think Don wasn't showing up, maybe health problems, whatever, but it's being taken care of, and we have money to put staff to it if we want, to see that it does continue to be taken care of. But we need to get it organized, we need to get it set up so it can be organized. That's a shame, because this is the second time we rewarded this grant. And if we don't use it this time, I think that's gonna be looked at the next time we try to apply for it to put on another addition.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
To Councilmember Bettinger, I'm, maybe I didn't say it how I intended it, but I'm not saying where we don't expand. There, I'm saying, we, there are things that Don identified that could be done that I think would take, be taken care of with that expansion without having to expand what we're taking. By, like, we can organize what we have, it's upsetting when you see the cardboard coming out the door, because it just happened to be the weekend that everybody decided to drop off the cardboard. Not that we don't have the staff time to go do it, but everybody just dropped it off, and it decided to pile up over and over again. So it would be worth, I would, it'd be worth discussing that expansion just so that there's more space for what we do have.
My understanding was, though, the grant was so that we could take on more. The grant was so we would take on carpeting, limited furniture, or mattresses, I guess. Mattresses and carpeting, and we would expand it, which we don't. We bought a container for mattresses, I think it's still over in the maintenance yard. I don't know if we've ever used it for anything. So the idea was to consolidate, as has been said, under one roof, in an organized fashion, locking down which, that which needs to be locked down, setting up the appropriate bins so people could store more neatly, giving people an opportunity to do better. And then, obviously, the questions come up maintaining it. It's, I don't know that it's necessarily, I do know that certain stores bring their cardboard down here. St. Francis people bring it down here because they can recycle for free here. And when it comes in, it's a load, but in some cases, it's, you know, there are still messes to be cleaned up. The question is, if we're going to expand to carpeting and mattresses as part of our acceptance of this fund, of this grant, we need to be able to handle that. Because we, somebody's gonna handle the bigger materials. So I can understand the argument that, let's get control of what we have. I don't know if this is fifty thousand dollars worth of growth here, and I think it needs to be clarified, if the fifty thousand dollar grant can be used for anything but expansion of the building. What I'm hearing you say is you think Sue Doll said that, but I would like to see that in writing if that's the case. And if, we didn't use it in the previous year, because last year, the money we got for it, I'm not sure if it was fifty thousand or what it was, but the quote that came in was so far beyond that, we didn't have any other funds to put with it to pull it off last year. That's why we came in knowing it would be more this year, and they gave us fifty thousand. And we've got the thirty thousand we used to run the recycling center on a regular basis. So we didn't use it all last year, knowing that, and we had a discussion last budget cycle. We should be ready with a backup plan if we can't, if we can't do the building. What else needs to be done there that we could spend the money on? That if we don't have the money this year, would be future years. We ended up with the floor sweeper out of it, and not much more. So I do think it takes a plan going in, if it's a moot point, if that money can only be used for the building, and this other RCA isn't, isn't, is applicable.
Can I just make one comment? If Councilmember Rainville is stating that she had talked to Sue, and Sue said that that fifty thousand dollars could be used other than the addition, then it doesn't make a difference if you put the addition on because you're not expanding, you use then, you use the money for other things.
Yeah, that's, you know, again, I think that's important to clarify. Because when we first got the grant, it had to be, to be a full service and expand what we're doing. And I don't know if there's other things that are considered expansion, you know, are there other materials we don't currently take, that other groups are recycling, that maybe we don't have to go into all of the carpeting and mattresses and furniture, and, you know, what else is being recycled that we aren't recycling?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Just to clarify, we are taking mattresses. They do store mattresses in a container that we bought, which is another container that should be in the building that's being stored over in the maintenance yard. But the mattresses come in, they do haul them over there and put them in that container.
Are people paying for those, or is this being dropped here?
That I don't, I know.
So if somebody drops it here, we store it over there for now?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
And again, we don't have a set timetable, that, our goal has been to, you know, start taking more and more. But by accepting the grant, there was no condition or no timetable on when we had to start doing it.
I think that it'd be considered full-time, though, is anybody staffing it on the first Saturdays?
Yes, Steve's been going.
Steve's been going, okay. I was gonna say, because that was one of our requirements, is that we open at least once a month on Saturdays.
And again, I don't think until we actually have what we want and can organize ourselves, there's no real way to figure out exactly how we want it to run and be efficient.
All right, anything else on this? I think everybody's made their positions known, any other information that we need? So Councilmember Rainville, if you have time and want to clarify what the grant can be used for, and get that to Cory, and she can give it to the council report, too. be used for and get that to Cory, and she can give it to the council before Tuesday.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I do believe that, um, Sue is out of the office until Wednesday, my last conversation with her. So I don't know if I would have that information by then, so it would be whatever the council votes on Tuesday.
Is there anybody that covers her when she's here?
She didn't tell me that there was anybody.
I don't know that anybody else has made that decision, that's what I'm asking.
So we will just go with what council decides on Tuesday.
All right, consent agenda continued, except withdrawal of conditional use permit for application of Grant Radamacher for expansion of the high-speed fuel pumps at the, uh, five and twenty-two intersection. Unfortunate, but that, um, apparently got too expensive. And so, uh, I believe that he will still be putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into curbing and, and landscaping and improvements, but there will be no drainage pump, there will be no.
Right.
Fuel pumps. Have we got any questions on that? An RCA here that Cory put in for the approval for Chief Conner to keep his eyes open for a fire, fire vehicle. At this point, it's not to exceed fifty thousand dollars with the consent of the mayor and our city clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Just, just a thought, I understand, we, we all agreed we need to look at it, was that fifty thousand include, if it was, you know, if it was found in Texas, does that include transportation to get it up here? I guess we never really talked about it, we said that the money was there, but we never went into how to get it up here if it wasn't local.
What do you consider local?
Well, okay, transportation costs.
Just say delivery costs.
Yeah, delivery costs. Because I know the engine we drove to South Dakota and brought back. No, what's that?
Did, did Chief Conner think that fifty thousand was reasonable?
Um, Mr. Mayor, the only reason I put this RCA, because Laurie had mentioned that you guys talked about it at the budget meeting, and I think he thought that fifty thousand, I'm assuming, was reasonable, I mean, it'd be better to answer that than me, at that meeting.
Well, can we get a more realistic number from him by Tuesday?
Should be able to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, and transportation costs, if, you know, I mean, so, so Councilmember Rickert, did you have two firefighters, one, both of you drove out in one vehicle and then you brought the second, brought the two back, or?
We actually had five of us, I think that went out.
Um, I mean, and, and somebody mentioned Texas, I mean, depending on where, I mean, a one-way flight for two people, I mean, for, I, that vehicle is, there's more involved in, than what this would be, I mean, would you believe that two people could drive this back, or even one person, depending on the distance?
Ideally, I think you'd want minimal of two, obviously, yeah, just for safety issues and whatnot, but.
So it, excuse, excuse me, so the maximum, you know, if you have two one-way tickets to someplace and maybe an overnight in a hotel room, that's, shouldn't be that much expense. I mean, even, that, in seven hundred dollars, two hundred, you know, three fifty a piece for a one-way ticket of some sort.
Yeah, because when we bought the blue truck, that was, they were flown down.
Yeah.
Um, Joe and Don.
Florida, right?
And they drove actually straight through.
Through.
I can't remember which state it was in.
Was it Florida?
Yeah.
Florida, yeah. So I mean, I think that, I mean, check with chief, but at fifty with, I would say, under a thousand dollars in transportation cost, depending on where it's at, that should not be, should be doable.
Gas and food and stuff.
MPCA would say not a plane, though, take the bus.
Take Amtrak for that. But I mean, I think.
Depending where it is, they, they recommend the train or the bus.
Yeah.
But if you gotta take a train to Texas, that's a long route.
That's a long drive.
Gotta go to the coast first.
Hmm, but I, I mean, I would think that if we guessed.
So at this point, we'll have Cory confirm with Chief Conner that fifty thousand, and we can, uh, discuss potential delivery cost. Anything else on the, on the rescue truck? And again, the money's in the, in the capital equipment fund for that right now, so if they find a good truck, we can move quickly. Everybody's invited to the opening of the State Capitol, encourage residents, elected officials to come and be part of it, the weekend of the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. All right, we have a request from a resident, Clayton Connolly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would suggest that we make a motion that we direct, uh, city clerk to contact the Anoka Sheriff's Office to conduct the commercial vehicle enforcement extra patrol as requested by the, uh, resident, and move this to the consent agenda.
Have you got a problem with that?
I, I think it is the forward information to the Sheriff's Department, but not to tell them they have to do it.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
Because that's a cost.
And, and actually.
Hundred eighty-first is actually half Ramsey. It's not even all or nothing, these, and this, the traffic counts that he has on, that are reported on here are twice what they really are.
I, I would correct that to, um, for that, we, council would direct the city clerk to contact the Anoka County Sheriff's Office and the Ramsey Police Department, um, to request commercial, um, vehicle enforcement and extra patrol at both of the intersections per a request from our resident.
No reaction?
And then to move it to consent.
So are we okay with moving that to consent as presented? Pre-evaluation of current distribution method of city new, distribution and method of city newsletter.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Um, just looking at, and talking to residents and looking at how we currently distribute the newsletter, I just wanted to at least bring it, bring it to council for discussion. Currently, if we're mailing out fifteen hundred copies of our newsletter, it costs a fifteen hundred dollars for printing and postage per newsletter, and that's not including staff time to, it takes to put the labels on for the mailing. Currently, everyone, as I understand it, after talking to Cory and Laurie, everyone in the office and from the maintenance department kind of pitches in to put the labels on everything when they're, when they're get out to get them printed. Just to open it up, to look at the possibility to, um, change the distribution of the newsletter by distributing it, uh, more electronically, where it can be emailed out or, uh, just put on the website, um, there could be copies available at the city office to, to gather. It was, um, suggested by Cory and Laurie that, um, it would just be put out, put on the, uh, website and copies be available at the, uh, city office. We could put an article in the follow newsletter this year, kind of stating how things would be different, uh, going forward, and we could even look at, you know, sending out an email to the, the current distribution list to say, hey, here's where the newsletter is. And, um, to go from there.
How many people on the current distribution list?
Oh, on the email list, I don't know, thirty-five or forty?
Forty-five hundred residents?
But then you don't count the residents, you count households.
Yeah, fifteen hundred households.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Bryan, um, I, I would like to see us do a different type of a newsletter. Um, I understand your thought of saving money by, by doing it electronically, uh, but there are other cities that contract with public, public, pub, publishing houses that do all of the legwork to, to produce a publication, they sell ads, um, in it, they take care of everything, they make a profit out of it, um, but it's still a benefit to our residents, they're getting a better, uh, a better newsletter, more information, um, it's more professional looking, and, um, it wouldn't cost us anything. It's, it's up to that publisher to make sure that they sell enough ads and have enough information in there that it's not going out as, at a loss, because their job is to make money on it. I used to have a stack of ones from different cities, let's see if I can still find those in my cupboard. Rather than do the website, uh, I know we're trying to direct things to the website, um, but that's something you talk to people and, you know, they keep that all year long, or half a year till the new one comes out. And I think we could maybe provide a better product, um, if we contract that out, and then that, all of that staff time would be freed up, because it would be the publishing house that would be responsible for doing all the work.
Councilmember Rainville, um, I don't totally agree with it, because the publishing company has to get the data somewhere, which would be the staff that would be supplying them with the data that we want in there. So there's still, it's not like they're gonna be calling people in our community and asking them for articles and stuff.
And to Mr. Ludus, you are correct, there will still be staff time, but it would not, you wouldn't have to design it, and I mean, that takes a long time.
Yeah.
And, um, the labeling and the mailing and all of that, that is taken care of, um, by the publishing house.
Yeah, and I, I, it might be beneficial to check with someone, because I know when Laurie went to the course orientation, that's where she also got some information that there's a lot of communities that could wait to give me their newsletter. Because it's just, it wasn't beneficial for them. I don't even think Andover does one anymore. But I, I think it's just that cities are just going away from that. But, you know, it's completely up to you guys if you wanna do it then.
All the millennials are going electronic.
Oh, pardon?
The millennials. Everybody wants electronic now.
Yeah, but most of our residents are that bracket, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
That's basically where the discussion came in to, you know, we couldn't, you know, there's, there's different generations and, and different mechanisms that have to be, you know, it's worth investigating for how the different generations want to do it. I guess the question is, before we spend the time and effort looking, working on the newsletters going forward, if we're going to make a change, we need, we need to put, we need to say something about how, how we're gonna change it in that September newsletter. So I know there's a lot of people that said, I don't, you know, I get it in the mail, oh, you sent it to me, because they probably didn't even notice it and it went right in the recycle bin. And they would rather get it online or just, you know, where they can either have it emailed or they go, know it's on the website and they can, can look at it there if they need it for reference. So yes, there is a different clientele where some people want it and other people don't.
And given that we put a coupon for recycling in there and we, uh, we maybe get three coupons a year, people just are not reading it or reading it thoroughly enough to see that there's a coupon for two-dollar drop recycling.
I was surprised at how many people did bring them in. We let them use them for something else, I think it was just for appliances last time.
Yeah.
But the fact that half a dozen brought it in, we gave it to them, I was surprised because the people that, that actually were coming to recycling, some of them had planned enough to say, I'm going to recycling and I have a coupon.
Why, shoot, I forgot it, forgot a lot. I mean, and it, it is already.
We could put them in the recycling bin and there's some people there that would find those coupons.
That's true, that's true. And it is on the website already, I mean, that, and it's always been, Cory's always posted that on the website, and so it is already there.
You could always have people sign up first, they want a paper copy, and then mail it to them.
That was an option. It's a matter of, um, the mailing labels are now in a spreadsheet where that kind of thing could be, uh, tracked if, if that's what we want to do. And then again, it comes to, you know, these, so many people want it emailed, so many people want it mailed, so many people on the website, where, how, how far do we want to go with it? That was one of the suggestions that Laurie, when she came back from her, uh, class, was that pick, pick two options and go with them.
Well, I guess the biggest thing would be, you know, is there some way that we can figure out, you know, if, if we're going through all this effort and staff's putting all this much time, you know, are people even reading it? So yeah, do you, in the September one, do you put something in there, you know, if you want one, please do this, and then see, see what happens that next time printed? And if you don't get any response from anybody, or very few actually say, yeah, send me one, then maybe we decide at that point, yeah, it's, we got ten people looking at it, it's not worth staff time to put together.
I think that, that you have to have the full context too. I would guess that in the, the conference that Laurie was at, you're talking about cities that have their own Facebook, have, have much better web presence than we do, they have people that are hired to do those things, um, to keep up the electronic content, to keep it current. You know, many of the cities, when I go to the websites, they do have multiple, um, electronic communication available. And while there certainly is a greater percentage of millennials in, in cities other than ours, but that is the, the means of communicating, the cities also have a lot more invested in maintaining that. The content's gonna be the same, it's still gonna be up to city staff and, and council members and, and the like to provide the content, whether it's electronic or hard copy. That part's not gonna change, the fact that the hard copy being produced in the city offices. And, and we have many residents that volunteered to, to, you know, put on mailing labels and help out with the newsletter, so we do have additional resources available. I think it's been a lot more convenient to just have staff do it, bring people that are familiar with the office and come in and do it together, but.
Mr. Mayor, um, well, I can, I can see the reason why we haven't had the volunteers so much is because of the coordination. When we're printing them, we're slapping on the labels right now. In order for us to print all of them, to bring in and coordinate the people, we would have to have them all printed, and that takes about three days to print them all. So it's just as convenient for us to ask their printing to just be slapping on the labels instead of printing them all, and then hopes that we can get some people to come in.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't disagree, I'm just saying that, that part of that understanding is, it's, it's more convenient to do it that way than the staff has to do this, and, um, I think to Mary's point, that if there were a higher quality newsletter that, that actually people held on to, ours may look like something that they don't need to hang on to, as opposed to you take a look at Ramsey's with full color photos and ads and coupons. When I talked to their publisher at one point, they were making a fair amount of money on it. But their staff simply had to provide the content, the articles, and the publisher did the, the artwork and the, uh, ads, you know, went out and, and they got paid for the ads, which covered the cost of the mailing. But I think it's certainly something worth investigating, we can, we can put a, a comment in there, we can find out. Maybe there are, the majority of people would prefer to have it electronically. And then we should be putting in resources so we can do a good job electronically. But I think we need to realize that in cities that may be dropping them, in, in context, they may be dropping them because they have much more robust electronic support to handle website and Facebook and, and Twitter and everything else. If you go to Minneapolis, they got whole departments doing it, so. And in Minneapolis, you're gonna see a lot more people that are only getting their, their information electronically. Out here, they don't even have K-Bar, so. Hopefully by the end of September, at least they can get electronically out here. And that's been one of the whole drawbacks, the majority of the city didn't have access to it, it's electronic, so. Anything else on this before, uh, Tuesday? Foosball court, Councilman Rainville.
Mr. Mayor, I brought this forward based on calls I got from residents who had seen the installation of the foosball court. And, you know, I, I can't judge what anyone else feels is acceptable or not, but the residents that called me did not feel that this was acceptable. The installation of the, how the concrete poles were, how the concrete was installed, the condition of the poles. And so I, you know, as a council, I, I don't know if this is acceptable to the remainder of the council. I don't know. I, I just don't think this is, in its current stage, it's the quality of an amenity we want to provide to our residents. There's already, the last I looked, there were already two poles off of the, you know, the crossbars were already off. I don't know if those, they were taken down, if they were broken off. The one time it was just laying on the ground and that's in one of the pictures. I'm thinking if staff took them off, they would have put them away. I don't know. I don't. One of the council member spots.
My understanding is the, the length, the width of the court had something to do with the confusion that the staff did their research by going online and found 14 foot wide courts and therefore cut the poles to a 14 foot width. Mr. Williams had designed 21 feet in mind and therefore the poles were 21 feet if I'm understanding right. So they need to be welded back together to reach all the way across. My understanding is the poles would be replaced with solid, non-welded poles. Question is at 21 feet, are they going to sag when kids climb and hang on them? The research online was that it might be more common to have 14 foot lengths. We have Dan and Joe in the back if council would like to inquire if I'm getting my facts right. So part of it was the, the discussion, debate on the width. And, and again, we, we went into a project without knowing the details and we asked staff to flush it out and they did their best and there were some discrepancies on it. So in an attempt to, to put it back, the welds aren't going to be sufficient for the, PDC to slide over.
The welds don't put nothing. They got cupboards in there to hold the pipes together to make it 21 feet. The welds ain't nothing. They just put it on there so we have something to drain on to stop it so the PDC wouldn't hit the copper. The welds don't be nothing. They're just going for it. They're not moving nothing.
Williams.
This was the same design that we used for the Heritage Festival two years ago. And we got, and I was there personally as well, somehow when I was there, and not one person complaining about the position of the poles. And we had the poles and we had the dusting. Everybody just came and played. I'm part of that culture down there. I bike and I, I walk that park. I bike down there. I teach kids how to play chess and checkers down there. I've worked with dog people. I've shown 50 or 100 people this and nobody said, oh, it's like, oh, this won't work. They want to play. Last Sunday, I had 53 people down there because a month ago I genetically said we're going to start a foosball league. This Sunday, they showed up. There was no, there wasn't ready. So I had to go home and get a railroad ball and they played kickball in Ernie Coleman field instead. The reason, Rod originally was going to do, from Mark Well, originally was going to weld the poles together or put them together just like he did for the Heritage Festival, but he was really busy. And so Joe went down there. Joe and I went down there to get them and he was doing it at the shop. We had a communication breakdown, so they got cut 15 instead of 21. So the fences already 25 by 45 fit the poles. So Joe welded them back together. You know, we have more poles down. We have indefinitely, we have whole trailer of poles down there. Plan one was to put, and there's another pole inside the pole for structural, but made it a little bit heavier. So next time we won't put the pole in there. That's plan B. We have plan C, use half inch tree bar, which they're eight bucks a piece for 20 foot lengths at the Home Depot in Brooklyn, Brooklyn Park or Brooklyn Center. All, all the cross motor piece does is really is for, give the plastics a little slide up. And that will be a lot lighter than the heavier poles. But, I mean, this is, this is kind of a prototype. That's why it's designed that you can take apart the side, the top horizontal pieces independently or the vermic ones independently. So if it's vandalized or needs a repair, that's why it's done that way. But the whole thing can be put together without a weld. Then there was the holdup. I don't know who stopped the holdup on fencing, but the fence. And so that's what we do with the poles because no matter if the fence is up, there's an eight foot gap on either end so Joe can get the skid loader in there to lift the poles out, lift the whole, both the whole things out at once. It was designed that way. The goal, the backstop is eight feet back so you can get the skid loader on there. I mean, we thought this out. We have plan A, plan B, plan C. We just need, you know, and they can be sanding down and put rust over them, but that's a complaint. But you're holding on to the plastic. You know, nobody complained after the Heritage Festival where most of the people are dressed up that they got anything on them of rust, dirt or anything. It was implied. The Heritage Festival people thought it was a good enough idea that they wanted us to replicate or do it again next year for somebody at Park and Rec wanted to do it. So it can't be that bad. So I would just like the opportunity for, for us to go ahead and reorder prints and hopefully get it done by Labor Day. Also get these football, these foosball leagues going. Nobody that I see down there is saying, hey, it's ISO or hey, we don't like the way. Look, the concrete at the bottom was clogged for weed, weed control. The people that were allegedly complaining about this aren't part of that park, park culture. They're not going to burn the calorie around there. You just can't hold it all. It's like, let's get rid of it. I mean, I got almost two years of investment in this thing. This was going a while before you came before, Mary. We were involved, Jeff Paul and Chris and I, Judy and I, you just can't say, oh, I don't like it. Let's get rid of it. And then you told me you would like to rebid the steel. The price for that steel at Monarch, which is arguably the cheapest place in town, 1800 bucks. You know, so we got this deal for free. So we just need to make it work. But like I said, I'll reiterate, the fence has nothing to do with the six poles in there. Fence can go up, but we can work out the pole situation.
Hey, council have anything to?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
Two things, I guess. Number one is, I have a question for Councilman Rainville. You know, it's, we continually try to say that we work together, but yet you're going to bring an RCA to the council. And did you contact staff on, on this and get an opinion or get, talk to Joe and ask him, you know, to get some of your answers?
Okay, yeah. And actually, it's in the packet. On July 5th, I sent the following email. Mayor, Cory, Lori, Lori, Joe.
Okay. Can I interrupt one minute? And the question is, okay, on May 5th, where was the rest of the council members in that email? You're communicating to the mayor, staff and the Park and Rec chair. Where's, where's the rest of the committee and where's the rest of the council?
I neglected to put them in there. Apologize. But no one, other than the mayor and the Park and Rec chair, nobody from staff got back to me. And I asked, please let me know your thoughts. And then on July 13th, I sent it to mayor, staff and the council, and Park and Rec chair. And it did go out to the Park and Rec members.
But again, did you try to contact Joe other than an email?
No, I did not.
And again, in my opinion, that's, it just continues to show your, you, you claim that you want to work with staff and by doing stuff like this, in my opinion, you're not really trying to work with staff. It would have taken two minutes for you to pick up the call, pick up the phone and call Joe and say, hey, you know, I know you guys were working on this. You know, I have some questions. I got some complaints. What, you know, what is the end game here? What's the goal? Because these are the complaints that I had. This would have never had to come up. Or it may not have come up depending on obviously what was resolved. But again, and I'll say it till I'm blue in the face. You claimed to say all this, but yet you never followed through. And you, in my opinion, are not trying to work with staff in any way, shape or form.
Well, Ms. Councilmember Rickard, you have your right to your opinion. I, I prefer that it's in documentation because I want to be able to go back to that. And that's my prerogative. You can, you can have conversations with staff if that's what you choose to do. I prefer to have it in documentation such as this so that when I don't get anything back from them, I do have my documentation that I, I did reach out to them. And I did neglect to put the entire council on there. I apologize for that. I did though, on my follow-up later, include the entire council. You know, I, I just, I, I can't believe that, and I, I don't want to, I, I'm appalled at the installation of this, that that's what, how it was done. I, I just, I'm.
Then bring it to staff's attention without doing it in this public forum, which you always have to do.
I, I did, Councilmember Rickard. Did I not?
I didn't see this. How come, how come Randy, Van or myself weren't on that first email?
All right. So, okay. So I did originally send it. And then I did send it on July 13th to everybody. I allowed staff from the 5th to the 13th to respond back to me. And then I brought it to a higher level, which was all council.
I was speaking about, I didn't even say a question and they had to respond back to me. What's the purpose of that?
I was asking that we not going farther with the fence installation until, that we put that on hold so that we could have the opportunity to discuss the issues of the pictures that I had sent, the installation of it. The issues with the poles, the concrete, the layout.
Last time I was at a meeting down here, I wanted that one out.
Okay. We didn't do a joint meeting. And then I put in the, in the memo that I sent, the email that I sent on the 13th, I did ask for a joint meeting. Instead, it came to the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
When Cory sent out the email, I replied and I said it would, in my opinion, as this project is representing the city, it would, that there would be value in getting together at the park to view what was there and to come up with something that was, you know, to, to determine if it, this is a go forward or what can be done to, to address the issues.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
An easy thing to do then is if she got some response, regardless of how much it is, say, okay, we're meeting at such and such date. If you can be there, be there. If not, you don't have it. Say.
I, I, I do want to say, I believe the timing of this was critical. There was a request for a meeting that, that I believe Dan and Mary put together for a joint meeting midday for Park and Rec, for staff and council to get together. And I, I believe that, that was an unfortunate timing. That had come into Cory and Cory ended up being off for the week. And Lori didn't know anything about it. And so it really got dropped in other extenuating circumstances. And so that meeting didn't take place. And, and I think we go back to us not communicating with more than one of those council members. We count on staff to do that. And it needed to be coordinated to, can we all make a new meeting or a midday meeting to go down there and talk about the specifics of the poles, the concrete and the layout, which, which what I'm seeing were the questions that came up on the 5th or the comments that came up on the 5th. When the joint meeting, I, and I, maybe misunderstanding or misremembering the timeframe, but I thought when we were trying to put this together was, was the week before Cory was off for the week. And, and it didn't come together because all those people had to be contacted. I, I think it made sense when it was brought to my attention by Cory, that looking at the pictures, do we have an understanding of, of the joints, the sagging, the, the concrete and the squareness, I think it was, before the fence went up? The reason the fence was, was held up is how much of this might have to be reworked before the fence went in, in place. And I haven't talked to Mr. Williams, the, the misunderstanding over 14 or 15 feet wide versus 21 feet wide, I don't know that, that was clearly understood before we started. So I think that was why get everybody together so it's not Park and Rec versus council versus staff. Everybody's in the same place, the same time. And we come out at least agreeing, if not appreciating the result, we'd all agree on the results. And so I think that was the intention. And maybe because of a lack thereof, it came as an RCA to the, the council. I still think that, that there, it makes sense to be in full agreement on what is it we're trying to accomplish and, and what is a professional level. You know, sometimes we, we do try and get by on, on donated equipment. And a one day festival is different than 365 year round where, yeah, I didn't think about kids swinging on it or jumping on it or using it as a balance beam or, you know, the other types of things. So there's a reason that park equipment tends to be a little more expensive because you got to put up with, with all comers year round and unsupervised. Mr. Councilmember Bettinger.
I think this could have been handled better though. Instead of being handled where it was, I mean, there could have been an email sent to staff saying, yeah, you know, I was out there. I noticed the poles are bulged. Is there something we can do about that? There's rough joints on there, on there, cracks in the concrete. There's rust on the pipes. We paint the pipes. Try to adjust them or address them to staff before we get this far. And that, and that never happened.
No, it did. It's right here. July 5th, email sent to mayor, Cory, Lori, Joe and Park and Rec chair. So Joe and Cory and Lori were copied on that. And they received complaints over 4th of July weekend on the rusty poles, the cracked concrete and the layout is not uniformly spaced. That's where, where it started. That's why it, it became, nobody's responding. So it was elevated on the 13th to a request for a, a meeting, I believe. At some point there was a request for a meeting. And, and in that, there was no response. And so it came to an RCA saying, well, at least make it formal with the council, if I'm understanding the progression. But it, it was brought up to staff first. And, and I think the, the problem is, is staff was doing the best they can. Cory and Lori have nothing to do with it, other than they're, they're part of the staff. They're part of directing it. Joe's doing what he can. You know, it's up to Joe to try and research. And that's where I think some of the confusion over the width came up because what he found is different than what was planned. And then there was a question on the, do we not understand something about, you know, surface cracks versus structural cracks? Do we not understand rusty poles and rough edges around welds? And the spacing, if it's not uniform, is that critical to it or not? And so I think that the, the point was if staff couldn't answer that, bring it to, bring it to council and have a joint meeting of council and Park and Rec. What were you thinking and what did we authorize? And say, okay, if that's what you were thinking, that's what we authorized, proceed. If we were thinking something different than you were thinking, and obviously it hadn't been communicated well enough to staff, in this case to Joe, what Park and Rec specifically wanted, so therefore we came up with different widths. Cut apart pipe and welded it back together. That was wasted labor. Now, I appreciate that Dan and, and helped Joe weld the pipe back together. Had we known, we wouldn't have cut it apart and had to weld it back together.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I didn't get an email. I got the email. But there was no question on it for me to respond.
Exactly. There's statements. There's statements, not questions.
Well, I got, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I get, Mr. Mayor, regardless of that point. I think we owe our staff at least a phone call, rather than email.
It could be, if I had fixed.
You know, I know in a given day, you know, I'm on my computer all day long. And I miss emails all the time. You know, again, before we go to this method, and I'm gonna leave it at that, because there's a lot more I'd love to say, but I won't.
Please do.
No, that's...
I think we owe our staff at least a phone call. Above and, you know, above and beyond just an email. Emails can be missed, obviously Joe said it wasn't. It was misconstrued that the way he interpreted it, he didn't see a question in there. And that could be. But again, it's so much easier to make that phone call and just, hey, you know, these are things that, you know, somebody called me on, you know, I want to know, you know, what's our plans moving forward? Instead of, in my opinion, making an attempt for staff to look at.
And we did have to manage some original layout. And it was presented to the council.
How did we end up with?
And we knew it was gonna be, we knew it was gonna be used pipe. We knew where the fence was coming up. We approved everything that's being done out there. And it's not done yet. You know, they could sand down that pipes and paint them. The fence, there's lots of work to be done out there yet. And if we have suggestions to improve it, great. And this, they got it set up, so this isn't permanent. You know, if it goes over big and then everybody loves it, we can invest in new pipes. But right now, we don't know if everybody's gonna love it or not. So the way it's being done on a low-dollar system, and if people want to try it out, great. We knew that all along going in. It was said it was used pipe. Let's have suggestions to help. Set to criticize and break down.
Hey, you know, again, maybe it's my business background. If I got this email, it said issues. Poles rusty, rough edges, some loose, some already loose. Concrete around poles already cracking, layout spacing not uniform. I would get an email back with, see comments below in red. That's exactly what we designed. Or we had to weld this back together because we had a misunderstanding on length. We put it back together. We plan on sanding that down and painting it. I don't think that these things would necessarily need a painting had they not been cut and rewelded. I didn't, you know, I don't know for sure. Concrete cracking, surface cracks only, it's not a structural issue. Again, it's typical. You get a response back. Here's your... You know, you can put issues, you could've put a question mark behind it. But it's typical in business. You come back and say, yep, that's exactly the way we planted. Or no, it isn't, here's what we're gonna do about it. Layout, spacing's not uniform, it's not critical to what we're doing. This is a temporary layout because we're just finding out.
Mr. Mayor, not everybody's you and not everybody does things how you do it. So everybody is different.
Well, I'm just saying that... Saying it wasn't a question. There were statements to respond to.
And again, everybody's different. I deal with hundreds of emails a day. I don't answer every email the exact same way. So you can't speculate and expect somebody to read an email and respond the way you would normally do in business. Not everybody operates that way. That's what I'm saying. So you're speculating again that because this is how business should do it, that's how Joe is gonna do it, or somebody else is gonna do it. That's not the way the world works. Plain and simple. Again, a phone call would've been so much easier.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Yeah, my July 5th email, I asked, I am requesting that fence installation be placed on, maybe Mr. Dean placed, on hold at this time. Please let me know your thoughts. That was a question. And the only two thoughts that came back to me were from Park and Rec Chair Corilla and the mayor. So that was a question that asked for an answer. So I... And again, I document things, because then I have my, I have it in a file, that that's how I did it. I know my side of it, and I'm comfortable with my side of it and how I did it. If that's not how you respond or do something, that's fine. That's up to your prerogative. My big issue is, in looking at this, I think it's... And no disrespect to staff, because they did what was approved. But this, to me, looks terrible. And I don't believe it is something that we should ask our residents to accept. I just don't... To me, it doesn't meet some basic standards in construction.
So let me try and put a bow on this. We're approaching nine o'clock. We've beaten up how it was handled in the past. And so let me say that if there's questions in the future, if I can ask all council members to put them in the form of a question, where appropriate, contact Cory or Joe, because they are the supervisors in these areas, and put the question to them appropriately. Give them a chance to respond to a specific question. And at that point, if you don't feel that you're getting a response, follow up in a documented way that that's agreeable. You know? If you ask Cory a question and she has a response that says, I don't agree, and you'd like to take it to the council to get the council's agreement on it, then bring it to the council. If she says, I don't understand, then clarify. If she just refuses to respond to you, then deal with that at that time. That being said, let's learn from that. So how we can ask our questions of staff more effectively. The issue at hand right now is, what level of quality and integrity does the council expect to see in our park equipment? Is this sufficient? Has used pieces of equipment put together on a potentially temporary basis until we see how it's utilized? Will its utilization be impacted by the quality of the installation versus the demand for the activity? And if, as we said before, if it doesn't look like it's getting used and we want to utilize that fence in some other capacity, that would be a future discussion. But for right now, to make a decision on this, and specifically the question at hand was the poles, the concrete, and the layout, prior to the fence coming in, does the council as a whole have any concerns as to the quality of this installation that we can address now so it can move forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
And the only question I have there is, would be back to Joe at staff. Is this, what above and beyond this do they plan on doing anything addition to this? Is this, are we complete right now, or are we making changes?
All right, Joe, do you know that?
My personal opinion, I think 21 feet's too wide. I think it's too narrow. Second.
Okay, let me ask Joe. So your opinion is it's too wide? And this... The weight of the poles themselves, before kids start climbing on them and things, they're potentially sagging. What about the other comments where the concrete? Is the concrete, the way the poles are in right now sufficient? Those cracks, are they surface cracks?
Just surface cracks. It's nothing with the structure.
Okay. The layout, there's something about spacing not uniform. When I was down there, it did look like maybe some of the poles are closer to each other on one end than the other.
It might be a couple inches off.
Okay, is that going to affect play? Is that gonna affect appearance from the quality park installation for the council's sake? Council okay with that? So as the council thinks that over, then the question would be, Joe's belief that these are, this is too wide, Mr. Williams' belief that it needs to be this wide, what would the council like to see? Looking at the sags that's already in there, I would tend to go with Joe's understanding. And if this is a trial, again, 14 feet, three people? And you're gonna have four-plus feet per person?
That's way too narrow. I play on a ton of these things. Some of them are... That's, if you would notice what we had out here, once you got people in there, it gets smaller a little bit.
Depends on what you're playing. But typically, if you're playing foosball leagues, you're going to have three on a pole.
And the sagging has nothing to do with the game. You know, if it sags, it doesn't make, it has nothing to do... Or you're putting the ball in the net, that's the game, not holding it back one straight. So whether you're holding it straight or if it's sagging six inches, it has nothing to do with the game.
All right, so council?
Mr. Ray. Councilmember Rickard. Joe, question, two questions to you, actually. Do you see the, on the ones that are sagging right now, in the picture, do you know if those are a straight piece of pipe or are those a piece of pipe with the coupler in it?
They all got couplers.
They all got couplers? Okay.
But the welds are not, the welds, the welds are not doing the back to back.
Yeah, no, I know what you're... I understand what you're referring to.
These are threaded couplers?
Yeah, there's an extra pipe in the middle.
So the couplers are threaded?
We can take the pipe out of the middle and now reduce the weight almost a bit.
I think the pipe in the middle's for strength, though, right?
Well...
It's all theory.
As of right now, yeah, because of the coupler. Well, question being, two questions. How, why do you think we could structurally go and still keep a straight pipe, number one? And if we can do that, can we get those length of pipes from Ron?
Oh, Ron's pipe is 22 feet. All his pipes. Everything I seen from the internet is 14 feet. So if we take it out, to compromise with Dan, which is 16, 18 feet, it would help it quite a bit.
Well, you gotta rebuild the fence.
That's just the same.
You want to get a power pole, it's on 16 feet, I don't know. Could go a little bit. The fence probably got to be rebuilt over, since it's canceled.
So you think the widest we could go, Joe, comfortably is 18?
I'd say 18, you want, that's the maximum.
With a solid pipe, no coupler in the center? So therefore, you eliminate the interior pipe that you already have to help strengthen that joint. So a lot of that weight's gonna go out of there, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I think part of the issue was with the sagging pipes, you're gonna have issues with the PVC rotating back and forth. Joe, I thought when we chatted, another one broke off or fell down. Was that right?
PVC?
No, of the crossbars. Yeah, so the kids are hanging on them. And so I think if the kids are gonna be hanging on them, which we know they will, you know, then we need to look at making, having that strength there, even if it is a solid pipe. Having the cross member be able to slide back and forth, it probably's not gonna make sense to paint the crossbar, but it may look, maybe, probably would be beneficial to at least paint the upper beam, the upper post on the side, holding the post up. I just don't want them, don't want...
I think if you painted an enamel on pipe, it'd be better than raw galvanized, but...
Yeah, I think if you're gonna paint the uprights, you might as well paint the cross beams, too. It may wear off because of the PVC eventually, but still would look...
I think a nice enamel would slide easier than a bare pipe.
All the posts out there, 1300 is made to get removed to replace.
So if we were to start again at 16 or 18 feet, no joints, we'd have to debate whether a pipe-in-a-pipe is better? So the pipe that you say it's made to come out, the fence, it's a little easier recording a fence that's smaller than a fence that's growing. You expect that it, if anything, there's less lineal footage. You wouldn't expect it to be significantly higher to reduce lineal footage on a fencing. But I think that the appearance is important. I think it should be a painted pipe. It should be somewhere between the 14 and the 21. That if 14 is what's common on the internet, and 21 is common with, when Mr. Williams has researched, again, I think we need to have something that you're in a park, in a part of a park that's not supervised, you can expect it to be a jungle gym of some sort. How do we make it the best we can? I think it needs to look attractive. As best we can, lay it out so it's consistent. I do think that, you know, our park equipment should look like professional park equipment. So from this point, what do we as a council want to do? I think we need to make a decision on length, on painting, having staff be the ones to talk with the fence people. Would that be Joe? Normally, would you be talking with him, Joe?
I'd wanna talk to him most of my life.
Who on staff, Cory, would be best to do that? Joe? I know, and I think they need to deal with somebody on staff who's authorized, too. All right, so we check on the fence pricing? Have Joe check on fence pricing? What are we gonna do, 16 or 18 feet? I do, it does look a bit long. Again, if you're figuring typically in a soccer configuration, the most you're gonna have on it, a regulation is three people. 16 feet, you got a lot of room there. You could have more. You get four people, you still got a lot of room.
Was the intent to have PVC all the way across so that if you did have more people, you could always add in more people?
No, that's the whole point of foosball. You want to slide along the pole.
You have to keep your hands on the PVC, and the PVC has to...
Well, we have different lengths right now. I guess where I'm...
Yes, because you have defense and offense.
Yeah, so you have different amount of peoples at different poles?
See, the point is, if the defenders are hanging on to that pole and they're keeping their hands on it, they both can't run over to the same spot.
Right.
And so that kind of, that keeps your spacing. And so rather than have six people lined up here in defense, you have two on defense. And therefore, you intentionally have a shorter PVC.
Right, yeah, I understood that. It was a question of, from a uniformity standpoint, does it really matter if all the lengths are different, or if they're all the same? Because, yeah, you still could have two defenders.